Don, are you ready?
Yeah.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. I apologize for the delay. Executive session was extended tonight. I am Scott Lambert, Chairman, and I'd like to call to order the February 9th, 2022, East Whiteland Township Supervisor Meeting. Please stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I would like to introduce our attendees tonight. At this table, I am joined to my right by Vice Chair Richard Orlow and Solicitor Joe McGory. Supervisor Peter Fixler is on my immediate left along with Township Manager John Nagel. Staff attendees in the building include, on my left, Steve Brown, Assistant Manager, Zach Barner, Planning and Development, Usha Hogan, Finance, and on my right, Steve Anello, Solicitor's Office, Donna Weickert, our new Operations Manager, who is managing the Zoom meeting and will assist residents if there are any questions, and Chris Jaeger, Chief of Police. Some decorum points for this evening. The meeting is being recorded. Residents will have an opportunity to comment after each agenda item is discussed by the staff and the supervisors, and any non-agenda items can be brought up during public comment under Section Number 9. And as always, upon entering the meeting, please introduce yourself and provide your address before you speak. Executive sessions were held today on February 9th at 4:00, in which we discussed real estate, personnel, and legal issues. The past year has been a challenging time for all frontline workers, and tonight we wanted to recognize some local heroes who have exemplified values, commitments to help build a better and safer community for all, all of us. First, sadly, we want to call out two individuals who recently passed. Former police chief Fred Rosado and Matt Barnes, Great Valley High School graduate and EMT. Chris Jaeger, if you would be so kind to speak somewhat on Fred's behalf, we'd appreciate it.
Fred Rosado was a, ultimately, a chief, but he started here in 1967 as a patrol officer. So, he was here in the days when we had, say, motorcycle gangs and things like some, some pretty wild stuff going on, if you listen to the stories that they told then. So, he was promoted to Sergeant in 1970, and then quickly rose to Lieutenant in 1974, where he remained until 1994, where he took over for the other chief, Bob Redzik. Fred Rosado led the department up until 2002, where he retired. Recently, he's been under the weather for the last couple of years, and, and he passed away at age 79, but he was a, a big influence in some of the things that happened, primarily a long time ago, but, once he became chief, he, he started pushing for more rules and regulations and things of that nature. So, he did a lot of good things for the department. So, we'd just like to thank him and his family for that.
Thank you, Chris. Any other comments by anyone? Our second individual I wanted to call out is Matt Barnes, who passed away suddenly two weeks ago in New Mexico. He was a 2009 Great Valley High School graduate, an Eagle Scout, and Penn State grad. He was compassionate about helping people and wanted to be a physician. And he was working as a helicopter paramedic in Albuquerque. We extend condolences to both families, and may we have a moment of silence in their Thank you. May these losses remind us of the gratitude we owe our first responders, not only in our township, but throughout this great nation. Next on the agenda is Item 2D, or 2E. On January 31st, I was driving north on 202 shortly after a horrific accident, and I cringed at what I saw from a distance. And before Chief Lewis described some of the events of the day, the board wanted to say that we are fortunate, very fortunate, to have a group of heroes who put themselves in harm's way to protect and save lives and property, and we wanted to commend you and thank our career and volunteer EMS Fire Division for their professional services and aid in this significant accident and in all that you do every day. Thank you.
You're here.
Chief Lewis, if you can go into maybe some of the details, and we have some of the footage, photos of that accident, I believe. Donna?
So, if you have still some misunderstanding, I asked if we need some kind of...
We don't have them. Okay.
If we can get them in a second, but if you want to start talking, I'll get them.
All right, Mr. Chairman and rest of the board, thank you for your time, and let me highlight this accident we had on 202. To give you some of the story on the incident, on Monday, January 31st, we were dispatched to 17.8 southbound Route 202, right by the Route 29 overpass. The company was dispatched at 01458 hours, and initial reports were an accident with unknown injuries and reports of a tractor and trailer overturned. Rescue Five responded at 081544 hours, which was 46 seconds after the initial dispatch. While en route to the call, the rescue and ambulance, the accident went from unknown injuries to with possible fire, and then to with entrapment. At that point, with the severity of the call, the Melbourne Medic Unit was dispatched due to the severity of the call. Rescue Five arrived on scene at 081908 hours, only 3 minutes and 24 seconds after the initial dispatch. At that time, the rescue reported a tractor and trailer on its driver's side with heavy entrapment. The driver was heavily trapped inside the vehicle. At that point, the crew from the rescue truck knew there was a need for additional resources, and a rescue truck from the West Whiteland Fire Company was dispatched. At that time, a short time later, I arrived and I took over as the Incident Commander for the incident, and MIQ 3 was added as an additional transport unit. The crews from East Whiteland and West Whiteland worked cooperatively to free the trapped occupant, and it took 61 minutes to extricate the trapped driver out of the vehicle. At that time, he was transported to Paoli Memorial Hospital Trauma Center, which at that time we thought were non-life-threatening injuries. Since he has been in the hospital, some other issues have arose, and he is at this point in serious condition. The crews worked seamlessly, the career staff, the volunteers, and surrounding mutual aid worked seamlessly to remove the trapped occupant. And what I'd like to do now is I'd like to just take a minute to recognize the crew that was on the call that morning. As far as the township staff, Captain Naf Singer, firefighter EMTs Ratchko, Bailey, Barad Dalmas. Here's that are here, EMS Captain Quentin Lottz, firefighter EMT Nick Lottz, were also on the... So, I appreciate your time.
Donna, any luck with... For those that have not seen any of the photographs, please take a look.
Just to highlight some more things, why the picture dropped, if you could just go back to that first picture. In that picture there is an Able Brothers tow truck that was called, and at that point, we weren't sure how we were going to extricate the patient, so they hooked up the rig for us just in case we were going to have to lift the vehicle off the ground in order to free the trapped occupant. It was a tractor and trailer that was hauling scrap metal going to the Coatesville Scrapyard, and there's a, there was a debris field for probably about a quarter mile down the road, and the roadway was shut down till approximately just shy of 3:00 that afternoon, that part, portion of the road.
Again, gentlemen, great job. On a lighter note, we'll move into Stephen Anello, leading us in discussion about Pennsylvania gambling.
Right, yeah, so the, the local share program for the PA gambling, it's a grant program administered by the Commonwealth Financing Authority. They're distributing revenues from the taxes on gambling, horse racing. So, it's through multiple local share accounts. Originally, it was just a few specified counties, and they now just opened it up for the whole state. So, eligible applicants include municipalities, so East Whiteland could apply for this. The project must be owned and maintained by the applicant, and the project must have costs over 25K, with grant funding in total of a million or less for each project. And I hand to you all the guidelines that they handed out for this program, so I'll just give you kind of the highlights. The guideline lists the eligible and ineligible project costs, but it's pretty much the meat of any project. These grant monies could be used for that. So, they don't require any engineered or detailed plans. They really just need kind of a coherent vision of what you want to do with the money, you know, what impact it would have on the community, and you can apply for that money in that way. So, the important thing is that the application window closes on March 15th of this year. So, anything, if we ever going to pursue it, it would have to be relatively soon. It also requires a board resolution authorizing the request for the grant, so that's something we'd also have to consider when we send in the application, if we do. And yet, it also wouldn't require any matching funds, so you could use just this money entirely for a project, not to put in any extra.
What's the total available pot?
Actually, I was, I was looking for that, because I was curious. I couldn't find it. I saw for one of the other counties it's for, so one of the other local shares, it looked like it was about 72 million in total. So, they said they anticipate it being highly competitive, you know, with the whole state, rather than just these few specific counties. I believe there was eight counties originally that were, had their own little shares. So, I'd imagine it's quite a bit of money, but, you know, a lot of applicants for it.
Yeah, I, I was in contact with State Senator Carolyn Comit, his Chief of Staff, and he believes it's upwards to $140 million, but they do, as Steve just stated, they anticipate thousands of applications.
Statewide?
Statewide.
Right, okay.
All right. Thank you, Steve. Once again, we move on to a grant award. If Zach Barner can discuss about our half a million dollar multimodal award.
Sure. Yes, we recently received $500,000 grant from PennDOT's Transportation Set Aside Program, Transportation Alternative Set Aside Program. This is for construction, specifically for construction of sidewalk and pedestrian improvements between Conestoga Road and Moore's and Church Road, so the short stretch of rather complicated sidewalk. All funds from the state would be used for construction, be put out through competitive bid process, and all of the design, engineering permitting, project management type costs are borne by the township. There's a agenda item to that effect later on the agenda.
And to help further identify the location, for children that are living in Brenner and then trying to get to the high school, it has been a treacherous track for them to walk along Moore's Road and across 401 to get to the other side. And so, we hope that this project will make the safety of those children much greater going forward.
Yeah, agreed, Scott. The, essentially, just a quick note, if you look out there currently, there's conflicting signage, there's a push button and a sign that says, "Do not cross." There's a guard rail that's smashed in, but we know that there's students, even employees of the district, that walk along that stretch of road to get to the district campus, so we do feel like it's a priority.
Okay. Thank you, Zach. Thank you for working on this. I know this has been a while. Next on the agenda is Item 2H. Steve Brown, can you give us some details here on this trail?
Yeah, thank you. I'll just provide a brief introduction. We have, I believe, John Mizel and maybe Tim Phelps from the TMAC, the Transportation Management Agency of Chester County, who's the lead agency on this project, which is to continue work on a proposed trail that would connect the Great Valley Corporate Center at Water area to Phoenixville Borough. It's a project that involves multi, multi municipalities and agencies, and we're part of the group that has been meeting pretty faithfully, almost monthly. And again, it's led by and organized by TMAC. So, at this point, I'll just turn it over to both Tim and John, who I see on the screen.
Thank you, Steve, and we appreciate this time on the, on the agenda for you, the supervisors, to kind of bring you an update on this project. Back in May of 2020, DVR PC actually awarded a TCBI grant, which is the Transportation and Community Development Initiative Grant, to Charlestown Township, who was the applicant. Back in 2015, Charlestown Township led a feasibility study for the DeValt Trail, the Sea, the DeValt Trail Study, to see if it was feasible to bring a trail from Phoenixville down through the corridor and into, into Great Valley. And that trail study was done by Bob Thomas, and it was deemed that it could, and the big question that it led to was, well, who would own this trail and who would manage the trail? So, we worked with Charlestown Township to put together the TCBI grant that we went after with them, and as they said, was awarded in 2020. This is a six-mile segment of trail that runs from Phoenixville into Great Valley, is the course that we're talking about. We have had conversations with Norfolk Southern, who was the owner. One of the things that they were very poignant about was that they wanted to deal with one organization, if there was ever a transfer of the trail, the rail bed, to, to become a trail. So, the work that we've been doing is looking at different types of management structures over the last 18 months, and we're at a point where we're doing some of our final interviews of some of the stakeholders and doing updates with supervisors, such as yourself, on this, on this matter. I believe in your packet of information is kind of a worksheet that we put together. One of the options that we are looking at is if it's a multi-municipal authority, and this particular check sheet would be some of the things that that authority would undertake. And at this time, I'm going to kick it over to John Mizel, who's going to kind of talk about the proposed goals and how this worksheet fits into that.
Great, thank you, Tim. It's a pleasure to be here with you tonight. We just, the grant is wrapping up in June, and we wanted to get in front of you and sort of let you know where, where we are and to brief you. As Steve said, both Zach and Steve are serving on our Project Steering Committee, so they've been involved the whole length of the project. And really, the 2015 study looked at the alignment of the trail and looked at the rail bed and the feasibility, and then we picked up, as Tim said, where they left off. And what we've been examining and what we intend to set forth with our grant is recommendations for who would be the right entity to own the trail corridor, and then what would be the right structure for a group to manage the, the trail itself, and then how would maintenance take place? And so, we're exploring those options. Norfolk Southern, we don't have a firm price from them yet, but as Tim said, we did speak with them. And then, the next step is, well, we're going to make a recommendation, and we haven't done that yet, as to the right ownership, whether it should be a county-owned trail or some other entity, but most likely, the recommendations will fall for, for maintenance and management of the trail will, will probably fall on some multi-municipal, either nonprofit or authority. And so, what we put in your packets is a checklist of all the different management and maintenance and policing options and things to think about. We wanted to get that in front of you because it spans the gamut from daily maintenance to monthly, to annual, to policing, all the things you have to think about. And, you know, in, in our mind, it's, would be split up evenly between all four municipalities in the corridor. You know, they, they all touch on it, they all would see a benefit from having the trail in their backyard. At this point, we just wanted to introduce this to you and entertain any questions you might have about our study and about our goals, and any questions about specifics dealing with what's in front of you on this checklist. And as I said, we're, we're going to be wrapping up in June of this year. Obviously, we'll have a report that, since Charlestown, the holder of the grant, there, they will be the ones that we will be setting forth the document to first, but then, as one of the municipalities in the corridor, you will see a draft version of this report and then a final version. So, I would like to open it up to any questions, if you have them.
Yeah, my only question, this involves East Whiteland, Charlestown, and Phoenixville Borough, right? That's all, the three municipalities?
And Schuylkill Township.
Schuylkill also? Okay.
Correct. So, the, the other thing I wanted to say, this is John again, we will set forth in this study some numbers for the range of possible management costs and maintenance costs as part of the report, so that you all get a better idea of how much per mile this trail might cost on an annual basis, because we know that's useful information.
Any questions from the audience, or... Martin, if, if you could talk into the mic up here with these masks, I'd appreciate it.
Just a quick question.
If you, if you could just give name and address for the record.
Martin Lutz, Borlae Road. Simple question, is there a graphic showing the proposed trail?
Tim?
I have to remind myself, even after 18 months, that you have to push the mute button to turn it off. Martin, we do have a website on tmac.org where you can go and see the project, and on that project, it is a map of the trail. It is following the current alignment of the Norfolk Southern line, coming out of East Whiteland and then heading up pretty much parallel to Route 29, then crossing over the railroad bridge there on 29, a great asset to the, to the trail itself, if it's included, and then comes up in the backside of Phoenixville there, and would head towards the river to where the bridge is that crosses over into Montgomery County.
Okay. Any other questions? Don, if, if there are any public questions, just raise your hands if I fail to ask you at this point. Tim, thank you.
Thank you very much for letting us present today.
Don't forget to hit your mic. Our next item, John Nagel, if you can give us a little background on the COVID vaccine booster?
Yes, Scott. Just very briefly, Chief Lewis and Naveen Rahawi, our new HR manager, have been working on establishing a vaccine booster clinic in town, and they've gotten a commitment from a local pharmacy, small town pharmacy out of Norristown, to provide free of charge vaccinations for both employees here and also for the public. We don't have a specific date yet, but it's going to be important for anyone who's interested in the boosters to, to register in advance, so that the pharmacy knows how much supply to bring with them. And I believe, I'm going to put Chief Lewis on the spot, but I believe we're talking with the Volunteer Association about possibly using the fire station for that purpose.
Yes, that's the plan. We're, we're, we're going to make up your, once you get the funds, give you the clinic and work, and we'll post it there.
Great. And we'll post it on our website and through our social media outlets. That's it.
And John, my understanding, the cost is $0.
Correct.
Okay. That's good. Any questions, Donna, from the audience, residents? Okay, we have no public hearings this evening, so we'll move on to board motions and resolutions. John, if you can maybe help assist me through this, but I'll, I'll give a brief background here. We have traditionally had some board members acting as liaisons for all of our subcommittees, but that's been sporadic. But that's been sporadic. This year, we decided that we would formalize it in such a way that we would assign a supervisor to the subcommittee. And also that, in the event that there are any questions or concerns, that supervisor would be the point person by the committee members or the committee chair to go through in the event that they could not reach a staff member. So we've got a chain of command that we can therefore communicate amongst ourselves, probably in a more expedient manner than we've done in the past. John, any other thoughts on?
No, just in most cases, there's been a board member assigned to each of the volunteer boards or commissions. In some cases, there, as in the zoning hearing board being a judicial board, there really isn't a liaison needed for that. And then the last several groups are really staff-driven committees. So the staff will provide a monthly written briefing to the board to keep informed of what's going on. There's the transportation group, the planning and development group, and also the Great Valley School Board, where staff communicates with the school staff as well as Charlestown, Malvern, and I believe Willis Town as well. So those communications will happen from the staff to the board. But the rest of them will have a designated board member. And I believe the intent is for each of these, for this to be an annual appointment that the board revises every year to see if it's working and also to make any changes in assignments.
Right. Rich, any questions?
No, not.
Peter? So at this point in time, I will appoint the following supervisors in this order. Under Planning Commission, Peter Fixler. Under the Zoning Hearing Board, there is no liaison needed, as John indicated. Parks and Recreation and Historical will fall under Scott Lambert, myself. Fire, Rich Orlo. Environmental will be Peter Fixler. Pension and Finance will be under Rich Orlo. Open Space, myself, Scott Lambert. And Transportation, the staff is providing monthly summaries and has been doing a good job on that in the past six months or so. So there'll be no liaison assigned to that. And then on the Planning and Development side, we are going to be doing a rotating basis of board members who will be attending those Wednesday meetings. The Great Valley School Board and Municipal will have the staff providing quarterly briefings to us. Joe, I don't believe there is a motion necessary.
No, there's none.
Next, we'll require a motion. John, if you can tell us about item B?
My pleasure. It's my pleasure and privilege to recommend the formal promotion of Donna Waiker to Operations Manager. Donna has more titles than I can remember. She is our fixer. She's the one that makes a lot of this go. And so it's strongly recommended that Donna be promoted to Operations Manager so that she is my, I like to call her my Chief of Staff because she gets to implement a lot of things that come from the board and then through me and to the departments and the rest of the organization. So the promotion is well-earned, and I'm sure she will continue to earn it as she proceeds in this new role.
Great. Rich, can I entertain a motion?
Sure. Happy to make a motion to approve the promotion of Donna Waiker to Operations Manager.
Do I have a second?
I'd like to second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations. Chief Jaeger, if you can give us an overview on our next job offer?
So we have a position. We have an open position. It's been open for a while as a second assistant. And this one's going to be more specific to myself and a lieutenant in the office. And we tried to hire for this position before, back in 2019. And just as we were getting ready to hire, the pandemic hit. And we had to put everything on hold because of all those problems. So we opened it up again recently. And this time, we were able to make an offer. And I believe the conditional offer is to Gene Ryle for, and the title was going to be an executive assistant to the Chief of Police, where she'll handle most of the things that we need on a kind of a private level. So that's kind of a new position here. It's a part-time position, at least for now, and with the maximum of 29 hours a week.
Okay, any questions? Peter, can you make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the job offer to Gene Ryle for executive, to assistant for the Chief of Police.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So passes.
Thank you.
And when does Gene start?
There's a few more steps we have to take, but I think we're looking for like February 28th, the anticipated date.
Okay, thanks, Chris. Zach, we have you up next.
Sure, I'll maybe handle both of these next two at once, if that's okay. At the last Planning and Development Subcommittee meeting, we discussed some ideas for getting the Route 30 corridor master plan, recommendations for zoning and land use off the ground. It's been a plan that's been on the books for a couple of years now. One of the main considerations, you know, throughout the corridor is what extent, what scale, what type of residential development we want to see. We've had some limited conversations about this in the past. And one of the recommendations that came out of the subcommittee was to potentially hold a workshop meeting with the Board of Supervisors, potentially with some members of the Planning Commission, like Deb Abell, our Chair, to really just kind of get into the details a little bit more, see what the board's preferences are, what they want to see, what their concerns might be on certain types of uses. In addition, we discussed potentially bringing on a planning consultant to help sort of, not only with that workshop meeting, but then ultimately with some of the planning and visioning and, you know, drafting of ordinances and things like that. So again, two agenda items there. One would be to authorize advertisement of the workshop session. Have identified at least one date that works for the planning consultant. We've identified Tom Comida. So sort of a two-part thing there. One for the meeting date and one to consider a proposal from Tom Comida and his office for assistance with the meeting itself.
Okay. At this point, do we want to identify a specific date or get that back to Zach? What was your projected date?
So I got some dates from Tom Comida's office. Again, I know that's, we haven't approved that resolution, but just looking at logistics here, we have, I got some dates from them. We ran them by AVT, PMG that runs our meetings, in case we wanted to televise it. The date that I have is Wednesday, March 16th.
What time?
It would likely be in the evening. I think that's one of the things we wanted to talk about with the board as well, what the preference would be.
So February 16th at 6:30?
This would be, I'm sorry, March 16th.
March.
That's 2022 or '23?
2022 if possible.
Just making sure.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Good evening. Yes, I can put that on my calendar for first.
I can't start earlier than 7:00. I have a 5 o'clock earlier meeting.
I'm good in 2022, '23, I'm booked. So Peter, how are you looking?
If it's important, I'll be there.
That's what I like to hear.
That's a very good answer.
Okay, then we will target and advertise for 7:00 PM, March 16th, here at the Township Building.
That sounds great. And I do realize now that there's, well, I realized earlier today, there is a conflict with our Historical Commission meeting. So I'll contact Jeff Dorr and see if we can rearrange that. So we'll hold off on advertising until we make sure all the arrangements are confirmed.
Okay. So I would then ask Rich to make a motion for the advertisement?
Okay. Move to advertise for the workshop session of the supervisors to March 16th, 7:00 PM, 2022, for the Route 30 corridor discussion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then, Peter, can you make a motion for the expenditure under E?
I'll make a motion to approve the price not to exceed $1,500 for the meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Zach, you're on a roll. So you're going to tell us about the engineering project with Morris Road?
Yes, sir. So related to the grant award I discussed earlier, this is a proposal from McMahon Associates for the engineering and project delivery services related to that project. One thing I'll note is this program, this pot of money, comes with strings in the sense that PennDOT has a system they call ECMS. I believe it's, and McMahon is on the call, they can correct me, Electronic Consultant Management System. And basically, what it comes with is just additional requirements for reporting, project management, review by PennDOT. And it also involves, their quote also involves bidding of the project for construction, of the actual construction of the work. So this scope is pretty all-inclusive in terms of the survey work that needs done, the reporting, the permitting, all the things that go with that. So I just wanted to clarify what this was for relative to the grant application.
I do have one question and concern pertaining to this. And when I look at the expenditures for the construction of a half a million dollars, I'm looking at a engineering cost that represents about 38% of the construction cost, or $189,000. I'm not a construction engineer, but it certainly seems though that that is a high percentage in relationship to the cost of construction. So I'm wondering if someone at McMahon can explain that 38% number?
Natasha Manbeck and Steve G., I don't want to mess up Steve G.'s last name. They're both on the call to answer any specific questions you have. There, Steve?
Yeah, I guess. Thanks, Zach. Again, my name's Steve Gianpaulo from McMahon Associates. And I can answer that question. I mean, typically, typically on a municipal project, the engineering cost is generally anywhere from like 15% to 20%. And as Zach mentioned, because of the PennDOT oversight, there's a, it's really, it comes down to, we call it the project delivery. To go through the design and all the reviews have to go through PennDOT. It's pretty extensive. And then the project with the federal money involved has to be, the project has to be bid and advertised, advertise and bid on PennDOT's ECMS system. So that's where the cost, that's where, if you want to look at the percentages, that's why it jumps up. But also keep in mind too, a half a million dollar job, half a million dollar project, we could have a $2 million project and then a half a million dollar project. And you really have to do the same effort. So when you would do the math, of course, the percentage is going to go down for a $2 million job. So that's what we need to consider. The one key item, if you look at, and I believe Zach has this listed on his memo, is the task number five is which kind of drives the cost though. And that's the PennDOT project delivery that we're referring to. So hopefully that answers your question.
What does that mean, project delivery?
So if you look at, if you look at our tasks, the typical engineering project, we would have to do the topographic survey. We would have to do design work, plan preparation. And then to actually get, in this case, because we're crossing a state highway, we have to get a permit for the signal from PennDOT. And then in addition, we have to get some other approvals from the agency, such as the DEP for environmental permitting. Because along that stretch of Morris Road, there's some drainage features in there where we're going to have to get a permit. In addition to that, because of the federal money, you can see on their task three, there's an environmental clearance process. That's because of the federal money. The feds require all projects receiving federal money to go through that process. So that adds cost to this. If it was just strictly a municipal project funded, we wouldn't have to do that. The project delivery includes significant amount of reviews that PennDOT requires us to go through, which is a little bit more extensive than we would have to go through if we were only going to receive a highway occupancy permit from PennDOT. And a big part of it is, again, trying to, besides PennDOT, the DVRPC manages the construction funds for the project. So they work together with PennDOT to have oversight on the township's consultant to do those reviews.
If we took this out to a one-off bid, would your price still remain at $189,000?
What do you mean by that?
Meaning a competitive bid?
If we took this out to a competitive RFP, would it still remain at $189,000?
Yes, I mean, that's, yeah, I mean, we looked at this pretty close, so. And again, you have to have, that's another thing. If you talk to PennDOT at DVRPC, you know, you will need an engineering consultant that understands the process. And we've, and again, we've done this for a number of municipalities. We've actually been hired municipalities through direction from the DVRPC. And PennDOT actually had consultants who were not able to get through the process. And then we were actually recommended to come in and to help the municipality through the process, so.
And this is being paid for by the $500,000 grant from the transportation alternative set aside? Or is that something different?
This is the, Zach, you can explain.
Sure, yeah, sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. The $500,000 is for construction only. This portion is township expense. So we pay this, they pay for construction. The only thing I'll add to what Steve said when we were kind of doing, going through the scoping aspect of this with DVRPC, they've, I think Steve kind of hit on this. They've had issues with people lowballing quotes for construction and for the actual project management aspect. They prefer a conservative quote. Nobody wants to come back with change orders. Nobody wants to go back to the state asking for more money. So one thing I will say is that I do feel like this quote is conservative. In other words, on the high end. It may be that the cost comes in lower, but this is the high-end, I would say, worst-case scenario. I hope, Steve G., on how much it would cost to administer and deliver the project.
And when you say conservative, that will be as part of the proposal, a not-to-exceed number?
Yeah, this is, yeah, this is not to exceed. I mean, unless someone, if someone adds additional scope to the project, which I don't believe that would happen, because I think it's, this is pretty, our scope is pretty set at this point, with the improvement that we're proposing.
It also includes subs for the environmental clearances and things like that.
Right, right.
There's some of these things that you might think of as being add-ons later or things that come up in the field as you're going through permits. or things that come up in the field as you're going through permitting, or what have you, have already been included in the scope.
What's our confidence level that the $500,000 will cover the construction costs?
I won't claim to be an engineer, but I would hope that it covers.
So, based on our experience, go ahead, Zach, you can...
No, that's fine. I was trying to make a joke, and it failed. So, go ahead.
So, we, we worked with Zach to come up with a construction cost estimate, and we used available data that we can receive from PennDOT based on similar projects. I will tell you this, there's, in the past, there have been projects that would come over the amount, but PennDOT will work with you at that time. I actually have a client, I had a meeting today, we're very similar, a client, that PennDOT's actually been delaying this project, and they came, they said, look, if, you know, if the price comes in over the estimate, you know, we'll find money to close the gap. They will tell you upfront that it's the responsibility of the municipality, but based on our experiences, if it does come in higher, you know, they will work with you. So, when we're going through this design process with PennDOT and the township, we'll make, we'll make sure at all times we know where we are price-wise. You know, if we see a change in the, in the construction environment, where prices are going up, that's where I typically will try to start the conversation with PennDOT to make them aware of that. You have something to add, Natasha?
Yeah, I was just going to mention that the cost estimate includes both contingency and inflation. And those are requirements for the DVRPC and TASA grant application. So, that's, you know, part of the conservativeness, that we did include inflation, I think, 3%, as well as contingency for the cost estimate for construction.
What's the realistic timeframe to have the HOP in hand?
We don't, we don't need an HOP on this. This is a different, this will be a different approval. So, there's a series of, I won't get into it, it's a lot of detail, but there's a series of approvals that we will be, that will be needed. And we have to have the project done within, I believe, Natasha, the next 18 months.
August 2023 is when essentially, all of the design work and significant permitting needs to be completed. So, that, and that is a grant requirement. And part of the reason that we're here this evening, the grant award was just made by DVRPC at the end of January. And in order to meet that deadline, we have to get moving pretty quickly because of getting through all of the approvals that Steve has mentioned this evening. So, but, the good news of that is that there is a timeline and a deadline that everyone's working towards. And we would then expect construction either in late 2023 or early 2024, depending upon PennDOT's bidding processes and approvals.
It's going to take a year and a half just to get permitted?
Yes.
God. All right.
So, that, on the memo, we're, tasks three, it talks about environmental clearance documentation. There's, at PennDOT, at the PennDOT level, I think it's safe to say there's probably 50 to 100 projects that are going through that same process. So, that's why, that's one reason why it takes a while to get through that. That's actually pretty good. 18 months is really good in the PennDOT world.
Steve, in this process, would, the fact that this is intended to secure safety of kids returning to school, you know, they'll be going back to school in September of 2023. If we can use that to try to expedite the permit process and get it done, I'd really like to see that completed to protect those kids going to school in '23 safely.
Yeah, I mean, we, we, I mean, McMahon has a lot of experience in this process. We try to hustle, and we try to push. You know, we see, we see, usually, we typically know where projects go down the wrong path, and we try to get these agencies on the right track. So, we're well aware of that, and we always do our best to get it to the finish line.
Yeah. I happen to be, this is, this is pertaining to the recent snow that we had, which comes few and far in between here in Pennsylvania. But I happened to be out, and I was sitting at 401 and, and Moore's Road, and I watched three kids trying to cross 401, get around snow piles, and watch cars come around 401 onto Moore's Road and nearly clip them. It was scary. So, if you can, I really would appreciate if you can push for completion sooner than later on this project. Any other questions?
No, no other.
Peter? Donna, do we have any? Okay. Not hearing any other questions. Do I hear Rich's motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to accept the proposal from McMahon Associates for the engineering services related to the Moore's Walk sidewalk extension for a price not to exceed 189,180 dollars.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you for your time.
Next, John, we've got... I don't know if Bernadette will talk about the opioid settlement?
Yes, Scott, she's prepared to summarize that.
Hi, Bernadette.
Good evening, everyone. Yes, John Nagel had signed three participation forms back on January 26, and we sent them to the Chester County Solicitor and the Pennsylvania Attorney General's Office. And this is, the attorney general had participated in the negotiation of two settlements related to the opioid crisis, and they were involving certain distributors, AmerisourceBergen, Cardinal Health, and McKeeson. There was a distributors' participation form settlement that had to be signed. And manufacturers were Johnson &amp; Johnson, Janssen, Ortho, and McNeil-Janson. And we had, that was called the J&amp;J settlement. So, there were two participation forms for these large national settlements. And then, the attorney general had, to allocate the funds that the Commonwealth was going to get, attorney general proposed a trust and allocation order, and we had to sign a participation form on behalf of the township in reference to, we would agree to abide by that trust and allocation order. When I emailed John and the board in reference to the amount that Chester County was getting from the trust fund, it was 15 million. It has gone up to 19.2 million. So, the county is getting a little bit more than what I had originally stated. So, the way the attorney general, the Pennsylvania attorney general set this up, he, 15% of the funds coming in, it's about a billion dollars coming into Pennsylvania, 15% goes to the Commonwealth, 70% to the counties, and at 15% to litigating subdivisions who had litigated against these particular distributors and manufacturers. The reason there was a bonus allocation, if all municipalities with 10,000, with a population of 10,000 or over signed off on these participation forms, there would be a bonus allocation. Since East Whiteland fit that criteria, that we were asked by the Chester County Solicitor and the Attorney General's Office to sign those forms. I think one of the questions that Scott and I've had was, what is the county going to do with the money? The Chester County Solicitor believed they were going to, over the nine years that were getting the money, the drug and alcohol would be handling how they would distribute the money. She did not believe, Solicitor, the Chester County Solicitor did not believe that they would do a distribution on a municipality-by-municipality basis, but rather, they would be giving it to nonprofits, treatment centers, to police departments, and to EMS and ambulance, and things of that nature. In these settlement agreements, there is a exhibit that indicates how you're to spend the money to combat the opioid crisis. So, it just can't be spent for anything. It has to be spent for specific things that would combat the opioid crisis. So, we did go ahead and sign that, and we're just actually asking you to ratify that at this point, those three participation forms, unless you had some questions.
And Bernadette, just to clarify, my question at the time was also to see how many dollars would actually be utilized for our specific residents in East Whiteland Township. And basically, the answer that came back was that it was intended to be one aggregate pot of money for Chester County, and we would benefit by its distribution in the county and not township-specific, correct?
Not township-specific. I did ask Nicole, who's the Chester County Solicitor, if she knew when there would be hearings or meetings as to how the county is going to distribute the money, to police or EMS. And she said she wasn't aware of any yet, but she would be checking on that. And I will follow up with her again on that.
Okay. Thank you for taking your Sunday and working on that project.
Sure.
Note that, Joe. Peter? Are any questions? Donna, anyone have any questions on it? Is there? Okay.
Hi, can you hear me? Yep. So, thank you, Barbara Antav, Broadleaf Trail. I'm kind of curious, does East Whiteland Township have any financial statistics regarding the opioid crisis in our community? And secondly, have we thought about potential loss of revenue from a good corporate citizen that is part of this lawsuit? Thank you.
I'm not sure I'm following your question, but I think when we looked at this, the township is not in a position to be involved with a settlement lawsuit of this magnitude. And we were following the expertise and experience from Chester County. Hopefully, that answers your question.
I guess I'm just, you know, I know that one of the companies that Bernadette mentioned is a big corporate citizen in East Whiteland Township, and just wondering what might occur with that, if they were to leave the township, and what the financial ramifications could be to East Whiteland if that were to occur because of participating in something like this, which I believe is important, but nonetheless, something to make the public aware of, I think.
Okay. Thank you. Peter, care to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to ratify the acceptance of the Pennsylvania opioid settlement participation.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes. Moving on to item number five, there is no motion to award. Item number six, Chris Jaeger and a brief description of our municipal bid for a few cars.
Yeah, we have two cars, a 2015 Dodge Charger, has 90,000 miles on it, and it was a marked unit. So, it was already decommissioned and ready for sale. And a 2014 Dodge Charger, which was an unmarked unit with 85,000 miles on it. It's probably the oldest car we have at eight years old. So, they're both ready to go on municipal bid.
Okay. And we've replaced those two cars, right? Have orders in?
We are, they are to be gone immediately, and the new cars are already here.
They're here.
What we normally do is try to use the decommissioning parts that are still good on the new cars when they come in, so that we can try to, you know, save money on the new outfits. So, that's what we did in this case as well.
Okay.
So, the sooner we get rid of these, the more fast we get the money back.
Great, thank you. I'll entertain a motion, Rich.
Make a motion to advertise on municipal bid to 2014 and 2015 Dodge Chargers.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Passes. Mr. Barner, you're up with some planning and development.
Thank you, Scott. So, the first item here is a, so waiver of land development 14-2021. This is a request to waive the land development review process for modular data pods at what I've called here the Sweetsford Road Data Center by Green Fake Land Company. Rather than getting into too far into the details, I think I'll hand it over to Jack Robinson and/or Charlie LaDain, representing the applicant, to kind of just give a little overview on this project and how it fits into the larger project that's planned for the tract.
Good evening. Yes, I'll wait for Zach to put the plan up, but this is part of the greater...
Jack, could I, could I ask you?
Yes.
Is that mic on? Because I can barely, yeah, it's on, I guess.
I'll talk a little.
Yeah, if you can hold it.
I'll hold it. This is part of the greater data center property, and I would say, this is just an early phase of it. We have a unique situation here and circumstance. As many, you may, maybe you may know that this was the quarry cap area, this area that you're looking at is located across from the, generally, across from the Malvern Crossing, the new townhouse development. It's relatively, that'd be the nearest thing. It's off, the actual entrance is off South Backland Hill Road. Sweetsford Road is to the upper side of the north of that plan. And that gray kind of running diagonal, the top corner there, that's the, that's the actual, that's the trail. Now, that's the Sweetsford Road there that Zach's pointing at, and that's the Chester Valley Trail right there. So, this, this site here was slated about 12 years ago to be a solar field. And what's going on with this property is that this is, this is what, where the former quarry was for the foot mineral property. This was remediated with, under the environmental remediation done about 20 years ago, and finished around 2010. And that red line that you see is a cap liner. So, this, these were the actual old quarries that there, that were as many, I think, 80 feet deep. Now, they're all filled in or remediated. And there's a liner on top. That liner is represented by that red line, and that's the actual location of the liner, and, which actually does extend over the property line, if you might notice, on the one side, on the right side of the plan. And this was all done through EPA and mandated and approved and closed out. So, what's left for this property is that there's a membrane that's on top of this, that's represented by that red area, and that this area really can't be developed by very much. It's just basically a grass field. What was proposed there about 12 years ago and approved was a solar field. And we had about 8,000 solar panels covering this field, and that was all permitted, approved. The unique thing here is everything was constructed but the panels. Only, the only that was done was, was the basin was put in, which is on the upper side of the plan. Everything was graded, stormwater was put in, the grass was put down, and the panels were never laid down. And these panels don't get affixed to the ground. They just lay on the ground. And they're all weighted for wind load, but they're only there, they're just placed on the ground. There's nothing else, no foundation or anything. So, the unique part of this property is that really what you can do is put something down on it. That's really the uniqueness here. Those panels were to serve that community that was never... Those panels were to serve that community that was never constructed, the Whiteland Village community, and so obviously that has not, has not happened. Data centers are now proposed. So this property then was rethought about and the, I think what's come up, what's come up was, and it's a better option from a stormwater perspective especially, is that datapods, and I think, I think Zach has some photos. What we're proposing is 12 datapods, which is far less impervious than we had proposed before with the solar panels. These are basically supercomputers and they're about 10 feet high by 10 feet wide and 40 feet long. And they, they do essentially what the solar panels do, but there's much fewer of them. We have a dozen shown. There were, as opposed to the 8,000 solar panels. And they just lay on top of the grass. We will put stone underneath them to level them out, but the site's really set up for something like this, where you just basically place an object down and service them. We show a service road that runs in between, but that will be a grass paved road. So in other words, it'll be a green road because it'll be used very, very little. And the reason this site's unique, and you say to yourself, well, why don't you just put these datapods in the middle of the desert? Put them anywhere. Because they require a certain amount of power that's not easily obtained. And so as you are aware, I'm sure, that the Pico Plainbrook Substation is right by. So that makes this property unique and a really good spot for these datapods. So our ask tonight was for a waiver of land development because really the site's been developed. It's just a matter of placing the pods down.
Any bitcoin mining going on there?
Well, I mean, I'll say that that's the type of things that these pods do. I don't think, I'm not sure necessarily that these pods specifically would be, but that's what these types of computers do. They're, they're supercomputers.
So you're saying it... Okay.
I'm the managing partner of Greenfig. And what the pods, what will be done in these pods is financial calculations, checking PIN numbers, doing billing, running credit card things. It can be Internet of Things. There's, we have a large contractor that wants to come in there and do checking on equipment, the stuff in your house. This is edge computing. So this is moving stuff from out of a data center somewhere else in the country and bringing it right up to the edge of where everybody's using it so that it makes it faster. You'd have 5G. This enables 5G. It enables things like the Elon Musk's Internet satellites and things like that. We also have some inquiries on artificial intelligence and we have some interest from Villanova for a, they're, they have a cutting-edge technology group there that would like to have a computing thing like this. It's a pretty, this is a pretty cutting-edge part of the business and it's a good use for that piece of land. We didn't think we were going to be using that piece of land. And it's pretty innocuous. The things are not very tall and most of that area is treed. You can't see anything of Malvern Hunt really through the trees, especially in the summertime. And then on the other side, it's tipped up. If you go by there and you look at it from Swedesford Road, it's actually pretty hard. It'll be pretty, you probably won't see much of anything.
How come these datapods were not advertised by the advertisement for the zoning hearing board hearing that happened in September? They were not listed on the ad...
We were just approached by them. We were only approached by them in the last couple of months. They came in around November.
So they're not part of the zoning order then, correct?
No.
If they just happened in November, how could they have been covered in September?
No, in November, that zoning order was not really regarding this property. It was mostly regarding the other two properties for the data centers. And like I had mentioned before, this, this use was already approved as far as the amount of impervious and an object being placed on this property. That zoning reference you're referring to was actually regarding the two main data center, the other two properties, yes.
Exactly, right. So there was no, this is a use that is or is not permitted under our zoning district?
Oh, yes.
That's the base of the question.
Yes. It is permitted. This was reviewed by Ted Locker as well as staff review and Arrow as well. And the comments that came back were that, you know, you would satisfy life safety, the standard comments. Actually, I did discuss this with Ted and the current use and we actually have the setbacks set up for the, for the use that it is. You know, like I said, it's been reviewed by the, by your zoning officer. We actually modified the setbacks to even increase them, but it is considered an accessory use.
So you're telling me it's not part of the zoning order, even though if you read the zoning order, the zoning order does mention pods, right? So I'm hearing inconsistencies here. Worst case, the applicant knew about it and intended to deceive us by not mentioning it at the supervisors' meeting.
I...
Now, I don't know, I'm not saying that, but...
We have a customer that didn't have any customers for it. We originally intended... To do solar on here, but we found that there's a cheaper way to do, to get the sustainable energy in here and we wanted to use this land. We wanted to, we were trying to monetize the land. We had, Pico sent somebody to us about six months ago and they, and they told, taught us about the pods. So what we had done was we had approached EPA then to see if this would violate our, the existing consent order. So they, they took a while to answer us back on that and the other people went away. So, so that, that kind of went off of our chart and we were primarily interested only in the two buildings. So, so we had, we actually, Ross Camp wanted to just transfer this land to us just to get it off of his plate. And, and we wanted to make use of it because we thought it was a good piece of land. So we turned around and started to look at it later. We didn't, these people just came to us in, I think in November and it might've even been December. So we came in right as soon as we could to ask about this. And when we asked about it, we came in and talked to the planning board that meets during the week and we explained it and that's the way they, they told us to, to bring this in.
So when you look at your road, you go about 80% up and then there's a little turnoff to the left. I'm of course assuming that you're going to cover that entire parcel with more datapods.
No, that, at this, at this point, I think with anything, especially in this economy now, the plan is to put a dozen up and see what happens. If, if there's a demand for it, like I was telling the planning commissioner, it'll be a good problem to have. But right now, the infrastructure, getting the power to these 12, 12 is as much, as much as can be taken, yeah, 12. Actually, as it is, Pico's got to ramp up a little bit to get these 12 to run. So if there's a future, that would be great to, great to hear, but right now 12 is what can be handled and is always proposed. And that, that little turnoff area is for turnarounds, actually. It could be for a future road.
Right now?
But right...
I don't believe that.
It could be, yeah, I mean, definitely could be.
I don't believe that.
Yeah, like I said, the impervious for this, we had over two, like almost two and a half acres designed for this and this is like .12 acres. So the, you know, as far as stormwater perspective, that kind of thing, the coverage on this site is far less than we had before with the, with the, with the solar panels.
Does the township have a copy of the environmental covenant that's recorded against the property and has the township had an opportunity to review it?
Yes, I mean, you're talking about the original consent decree?
Yes.
Yes, so that went through the EAC years ago, many, many meetings. The consent decree was...
Before the existence of pods?
Yes.
Right.
Yes, but the, I guess the DEP approved the coverage of much more impervious for the solar panels. So we had, we had NPDS permit as well as a township permit. All of that was, was approved back in 2010.
But has any of it been updated since the 12 pods have been brought up?
There's nothing to update because what happened was we had placed all the storm, everything was, everything was installed. The, the solar panels never actually placed on it. The impervious was never put down. So from a, there's no erosion, there's no erosion here. We're not like grading or anything. There's, we're simply placing these units on top. So it's really the same, similar use from a land perspective with far less impervious.
The EPA was actually interested in having us do this. They're interested in having this developed because they think that this is a case study of, of their work, of their getting private-public partnership to develop something that was a, that was a, this was a horrible mess. And, and it's cleaned up now and it's, and there's three feet of soil on top of that barrier there. And the only thing that they don't want us to do is they don't want us to disturb that rubber cap. And what we found was, we found a way just to go on the surface and, and put something on the surface that where there's, where there's no impervious, where there's almost no impervious coverage there. We had Darrell look, Darrell's from Arrow?
Darrell.
Yeah, and he looked at it carefully and he was, he was, he was in favor of it. The EPA likes the idea of us doing this. They were encouraging about it, so...
Charlie, just, just so you understand where we're coming from at this point in time, in this... Exactly.
Yes.
You're, you had discussions at the subcommittee meeting in December and that information didn't reach this board. So we're asking questions. This is coming out of the, out of the blue.
Right.
So these questions are coming as a result of that and we're trying to understand it better. We're not trying to give you a hard time, but...
Okay.
So you understand?
The beauty of this place is we have a place where we, where we can bring in, where we can get power. And that substation is used at about 32%. So all of this power with, the power that was there, the switchgear and everything that was there was going to the 70 buildings that were out on that property and over to the rolling plant at Worthington. So, so we have an opportunity to get some power there, but the, part of the problem is, is to get the power in fast enough. We're trying to bridge the time that it takes them to bring in the transmission lines for the data center. We're trying to bridge that with, with this to some extent and we're, we're pushing them as much as, as you can push Pico to get us the power more quickly.
Sure. A couple logistics types of questions that, while I've got this map here in front of me, it's hard to envision and wondering about, they aren't the most attractive, we've got one sitting out here. Okay, they're not the most attractive brick and mortar buildings that exist. So my question is, from vantage point, I don't know if it can be seen from the road. I don't know if it can be seen from the new development. Do we have any type of blending of landscaping to prevent it being an unsightly thing?
I went over there and looked at it myself when we first started talking about it to see how we were going to handle the questions on that. Because that's the first question is, is that people don't want to look at, don't necessarily want to look at anything other than what was there. So you're looking, when you're looking across there, you're looking at the, effectively looking at the Pico substation. Now, they're going to be seeing it from a little closer up, but if you look, even with the leaves off the trees, it's, there's enough tree line and we're adding more tree line with, on the Malvern Hunt side. So if you look straight across the street, you're looking into the new development. And when you look straight across the street, what you're looking at is, you're looking at the ends of the houses and you're looking at the bathroom windows on the second floor. So if anybody sees that, it's going to be because they're looking out their bathroom window at it from there. And there are only a couple of houses on the end, there are only like two or three units that would even be able to see it from the new development. You can't see anything. If you look on the other side of it, from there going all the way to, to West Whiteland, you can't see, you can't really see through there. And it's also, it's also tilted up.
Yeah, I can maybe add a little, Zach, if you can actually show my plan up there. And that's good too, but I'll...
Just be this quick to not pick a margin.
Yeah, that might...
Pick a margin.
Okay.
Also, also another thing is, as we've been working on the sewage treatment plant...
Yeah, that's perfect.
There you go. That's the corner up there. So you're looking up and over and that, and that thing was graded down like this on an angle so that the sun would suck shine in from the, from this angle. You can see where the shade is from that fungal, that thing is shaved off going in that direction.
Right. The field is up on the top of that hill and like Charlie says, you can't even see, because you need, you would need to see up over the berm and then down into the field. So really, the place that the field is most visible will be from our data, the future data centers and perhaps the Pico substation itself. But from the north looking to looking south, you'd be hard pressed to see it.
And you can't see in there from 202. You can't see over the wall at 202.
The dilemma we have is that, and well, it's not a dilemma, and in my mind, it's not a dilemma because you can't see the field anyway, but we cannot plant around, and that's what the zoning relief was about, actually, Mr. Orla. And a lot of the zoning relief was about that in November, that we could not put any plantings around this property because of that membrane that I showed you in red. So, but in this case, you really don't need plantings because you can't see over to even see down the field.
I, I, I have a concern as you're describing this, okay, is that we are investing $1.6 million to build the Backton Hill Park. And one of the great things about that park is as you sit up on that ledge, you've got a view towards Immaculata and the valley and the view. And I, I don't, I don't know if you're going to be able to see pods from there.
No, it's farther up the road.
But the vantage is pretty wide.
Give me one second. I'm getting a lot of people saying that they can't hear you.
Okay.
Because you're not...
Okay. I'm sorry.
Okay.
With 8,000 panels...
I don't know if the look is... From, for solar panels. Good look. Have them effective because they fight where they're...
And I've got a message, you cannot see it over into that field. It only tends to be hot and dry and then it's really going like...
Let me, let me cut it a little short. Now that we had the opportunity to ask questions for the first time about pods and we see where it is, I'm not prepared to say yes, I'm not prepared to say no.
Okay.
I want to go out and look at it and ask you to come back next month. I also want to make sure that if we do waive land development, we still have the right to impose conditions on that waiver as if it was going through full land development, provided they agree, obviously. I don't know if there's any condition on that, but if we want to impose conditions, we should be able to if the applicant is requesting a waiver of the process during which we could impose conditions.
There's two different kinds of waivers. One is to waive the entire process procedurally and otherwise. The other one is to grant land development approval and waive any portions of the ordinance that are inconsistent with our proposal.
Mm-hmm.
So depending on how you approach it, in one case you can impose conditions and the other you can't.
So the way to impose conditions is to waive, to grant land development, but waive all the process that you have to go through.
Right.
We'll, we'll work with you. We're happy to work with you on that. We'll work with you. We're happy to work with you on that. Joe's been very, very good to work with on the other thing. You've been very generous to us so far and have worked, I think flawlessly. This process has worked flawlessly for us and for you. We've given you what we can. We've given you the cleanup of the sewage treatment plant for free. We're doing that work. We're going to take the dirt off the park.
You got a road out of it. I know.
That was an expensive road.
I know. Well.
All right, I hear you.
You have to do the road.
I got it. I got it. There are no offsites here. I understand. I get, I'm with you. We'll work with you. I mean, I don't know that you need to formalize it that much. If you tell me that you have a few things that you need in the course of this, we've been, we're doing a pretty good job of that sewage treatment plant without any agreement.
That's what I mean.
And we are perfectly willing to work with you. And I think we've shown that all along. We're doing the same thing in West Whiteland.
What I'd recommend is that the board tell me and the applicant what they want.
Right.
You know, landscaping or whatever.
Can we do?
And then we'll figure out legally how to approve it.
Can we do that in some kind of an expedited form? Because the one thing that we're afraid of is we're afraid that we're not going to be able to do this quickly enough for this customer and they're going to Ohio. And it's a good piece, it's also a good piece of revenue for the township or at least the school district.
How is it?
Property tax.
So, you're going to also agree that even though it's not land development and even though you don't need a building permit for this, you're going to allow the county to reassess the property by putting pods on the real estate?
They'll come and do it anyway.
Oh, not so sure, but.
Yeah, they will. They've already, believe me, they're faster than, they're out there with their hand out quickly.
But they're usually driven by the receipt of a building permit. Exactly, right. And if there's no building permit, they don't notice of it. But if they're told of it and you don't object, then it will be assessed.
I'm not so sure you're going to get additional tax dollars at all.
I agree with you.
Well, there will be, there will be revenue from the sales tax on the electricity.
Well, not to us.
Yeah, I think the sales, I think part of the sales tax and part of the grocery receipts tax comes back to the township.
We don't have a grocery.
You don't get, you don't get any portion of the sales tax that's charged in the township?
Not that I've ever heard of. No.
I'm Pennsylvania.
If you want to give it to us.
I'll go run for, I'll go run for representative and make it get passed for you.
Yeah, let's, we'll put together a list. Come back next month. We'll get it done.
Can we do it, is there any way that we can put that list together and do it more quickly than that?
We only meet once a month. And I am not coming back here before that.
February is short.
February is short, so.
February is two or three days short.
So, it's only three weeks in theory we'll be back. If three weeks makes the difference, they're going to walk away anyway.
I would just want to know that we would decide then?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Absolutely.
All right, would you do me a favor? Would you get to me with the things that you want, your wish list?
Sure. Yes.
As soon as possible?
Sure.
All right. That's fair enough. And if you want me to go out there with you, I'll go out there and explain what it is. If you want to have a meeting out there, I'll go out there and meet with all three of you at different times if that has to be.
I think, I think one of the, one of the things I would recommend to the board is that there be some kind of cap on the number of pods you put out there on the entire parcel. Because if it develops into entire pods all over the place, that is a full-blown land development and it shouldn't be waived.
Well, I can tell you what it'll be in the next 18 to 24 months. It's going to be about what's there now.
Yeah, but then if you, you know, three years from now you want to double it and then two years from then you want to triple it and, you know, it becomes a different beast than what's being presented to the board tonight.
I think, yeah.
We'll come back with a land development plan then. We'll come back with a plan and you can decide that at that point.
Right.
Because by that time, we hope there are going to be two 1 million square foot buildings out there and another half million square foot building. And who knows what else?
Two million square foot buildings? Another half million square foot buildings?
Yeah, we're going to try to do another building in West Whiteland.
Even though I asked the question last month in September, what's going on with the West Whiteland piece? And the only answer was we're building a facility for them.
Our West Whiteland piece, our West Whiteland piece, the only piece that we own over there now, it's going to have two things on it. It's going to have the township building on it and it's going to have the stormwater facility on it. That's it.
Okay.
But there's a lot of land over there.
Yeah, Charlie referred to other properties.
There are other properties over there.
There's no other, there's no other room on this West Whiteland piece.
You don't have anything planned right now. You don't have an idea of what we want to do.
I have a question for Ted if I may. And Ted, I don't want to put you on the spot, so if you want to think about the answer, you're welcome to. They're saying it's permitted by zoning as an accessory use. What's it accessory to?
There's no use there. That's right. There's something approved, but it doesn't exist.
I believe the use is part of, or the same as the data itself, use-wise. It was discussed at zoning hearing board, putting pods there in lieu of the solar panels. And the zoning hearing board approved it.
That's not what we just said.
There was no limit to the number of pods, but the use is the same as the data center itself.
So, you're linking it to the data center?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I believe the way they came in originally was to expand what was previously approved for one parcel across all three, but they showed on their exhibit was some combination of pods or solar fields.
Yeah. Yeah, it was.
Here's the drawing that we use, Rich. It's got the pods on one end and the, and we weren't even sure what the layout was.
Right. It was a surprise to us when you thought we were, it was a deception. I don't want you to think there was any, been any deception. I think if anything, it's been scaled back a lot.
I would never think that.
Pardon? Pardon?
I would never think.
No, there is absolutely not. I think that blindsided that comment because we have, and if anything, it's been scaled back a lot, you can see from this prior plan that we had before.
And if that was shown at the zoning hearing board, that is also inconsistent with where they're located on the current plan.
Because we didn't actually, at that, in the earlier stages, this thing's been, we came in here the first time for about 400,000 square feet.
I understand.
And then it went to 720 and then it went to 2 million. And all along this thing, we keep waiting for things. And while we keep waiting, other things happen. People say, why don't you do this? Why don't you do that? Can you do this for us? Can you get this on? So, we started to hear about the data pods, but we didn't know the spacing on them. So, that's really just a guess.
I understand.
And we left the solar on there just because we didn't know whether we were going to do solar or not.
Sure. I understand things change all the time in the development world, whatever the use is. But there's a process that you've got to go through and there's a process. So, and it's hard to control. It's a pain in the neck. That's why developers like to develop but hate development because they have to come before us all the time. That's the system in Pennsylvania.
We just think, Mr. Rollet, this site's a little unique because we actually did have a land development for the solar field 12 years back and it was approved.
And on that field that's already.
Yeah, it's really the same use, but much more scaled back. And like I said, the infrastructure's already in and we can't buffer. We've kind of talked about that. So, we're like, well, what's really left to talk about at this point?
But when we came, Ted and Darrell, we asked them about that and they said, no, you don't need the land development. We talked to Zach about it.
Let's come up with our list and we'll be back next month.
And I think that the primary concern would be to limit this approval to what you're showing and have it not morph into something different from what you're showing.
Yeah, that was our intention.
And then if we wanted to do something else, we'll do it again. We'll come back.
Come back through the process.
Yes, yeah, that was always the intention, absolutely.
Charlie, I have one final question for you. As you see it right now, these 12 pods, how long would they remain there? For what length of time?
Hopefully for a very long time.
It's not, it's not a short term.
I would guess till the technology changes and perhaps they get smaller. Who knows? I mean, things don't get larger here in the computer world, so they would be maybe changed out for something that's more high-tech at some point.
Because this equipment that's swapped out within the, now these are built in a factory and then they're brought out here.
Sure.
But there's a lot of wiring and fiber issues.
Okay, sounds good. We'll keep going.
Thank you.
You're on mute. I. Okay, now you're not. I unmuted a couple of times. Okay, hopefully this will last. Deb Mobile, 42 Village Way, Malvern. I have two comments. One, I think that the board is wise to put off the decision because they don't have the information that they need. I understand that the developer is anxious because they don't want the person to move to Ohio. That's not our concern. Our concern is the well-being of this township, particularly when it's on a site that was formerly an environmental disaster. The other question I have though, in looking at things to put in the plan or require, what kind of security are you going to set up? You're talking about pods that are potentially running through billions of dollars worth of business and nowhere on there did I hear anything other than we can't plant trees. Well, what are we doing about fencing or security officers or cameras? Or how is that going to be monitored? Because anything you put in place may potentially be visible from the neighborhood, et cetera. Thank you.
You're right. And the, there is currently a fence there with a barbed wire top on it. And this is probably going to just be, there'll be security, electronic security inside that fence and around the pods. And there will be onsite security people there. And there are going to be onsite security people on the data centers. And the data centers will also have a lot of electronic sensors and things around them to alert the staff that there's anybody out there. So, it's primarily electronic. And what's already there is a six-foot-high chain-link fence with barbed wire on the top of it on at least two sides of it. And I think you can see that from the, should be able to see that from what Zach was showing us before.
Yeah, the site is already fenced and gated, but it's going to be improved. We even have a guardhouse proposed for the data centers when they come in.
Barbara Ann Thab's up next. Go ahead, Barbara.
Hi, I thank you, Barbara Ann Thab, Broadleaf Trail. First and foremost, I just want to remind everybody that it has been nearly impossible to hear most of these two speakers because they start talking before the mic is in front of them or they're talking from the other side of the room. So, if we could just please remember that in order for people on Zoom and those that watch the recording, you have to speak into the microphone. So, thank you for that. Scott, I wanted to just say thank you for bringing up the vista potential impact for Bacton Hill Park. I think that's very important because there is, as you said, an amazingly beautiful vista up there at Bacton Hill Park. And so, certainly seeing something that is described as a pod, which doesn't sound too beautiful to me, I would be concerned about that. And secondly, I'm just wondering, does that area flood? Especially after we had that huge flood earlier or, you know, towards the end of last year? Just wondering about that. I don't know, but it seems to me that having such elaborate computer stuff in an area that might flood in something like a pod that probably is built on a flat base didn't, just didn't seem to be wise. And thank you for, the supervisors for asking the tough questions with this developer. Thanks.
This property is located in one of the highest parts of the township. There's no way there will be any flooding.
Okay, no other questions? Any other questions? Sure, Chuck, go ahead. Microphone.
Sorry. I'd like to know, who am I going to be hearing from and approximately when?
I think, I think we'll designate Zach Barnier to be the.
Okay, so Zach can get in touch with me.
I'm sorry, what did I just get assigned to do?
We'll tell you later.
I have to talk to Charlie. Donate your salary for the next six months. Yeah, we need to get some longer straws in this place.
Yeah. Zach, you'll be communicating to Charlie through us.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, thank you. Okay, I lost my place. And we are moving on to 7C, Zach. Is that correct with the extension of time?
That is correct. So, two applications here. One is a land development on South Mallon Road for an office flex building for Evergreen Landscaping. The other is for the Nickervacher redevelopment. Both are requesting extensions until May 31st in order to work through some of the existing review letters and continue to work with staff to resolve some of the issues at each project.
Zach, in 20 words or less, what the heck exactly for everyone out there is a flex building?
Flex building is just essentially in this, in this case, I'll say it's a more of an open building. It's, you know, like a small warehouse. In this case, it would be an office on one floor, sort of a mezzanine. And then basically an open garage for like a landscaping or a contractor of some kind. It's basically just an open industrial-type building with not a lot of partitions and things like that generally.
Correct.
This is the proposed building at the end of Mallon Road, at the end of the Bishop's Subsite.
Correct, yeah, at the southern end of Mallon.
Southern end, thank you.
Okay.
Both are actively submitting plans and revising, so it's not as if they've gone quiet.
Steve, you can't see if there's anyone asking any questions? Okay, thank you. Rich, Peter, any questions on that?
No questions.
None.
Okay. Peter, make a motion?
I could make a motion to extend, consider an extension of time to render decision for the office flex building at 9 Mallon Road and for the Nickervacher redevelopment tract.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes. And Zach, continue please with 7D.
Yeah, so 7D, the first one here. Yeah, so 7D, the first one here is for a modification to the phasing plan at the Uptown Worthington Development. The applicant recently, I guess in the last year or so, received a master plan amendment and land development approval for Phase 4. That was, and specifically Phase 4 involved an office building and movie theater. They're now asking to break that into essentially two sub-phases. Phase 4A for an office building, it would be a medical office building with a user in hand. And the 4B would be for the movie theater, which currently does not have a potential tenant and would come at a later date.
Okay, pretty simple. Any questions?
None.
Rich?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the resolution to modify the phasing plan for Uptown Worthington.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes. Next, Zach, is 3 Ton Road.
Sure. So this is a project on 3 Ton Road. It's sort of at the, I'll say, the front end of 3 Ton Road. It's next to the Closets by Design Building, which was built in the last couple of years. What they're proposing to do, so all three of these lots were proposed, were approved around the same time for, again, industrial flex-type buildings. What they're asking to do as part of this current request is to essentially shrink the building that was approved previously. They were approved for approximately 50,000 square foot building. They're requesting to reduce it to 40,000 square foot and to modify particularly the rear parking area to reduce the amount of grading that's required. There is, you know, we, staff and the solicitor's office did review some of the background of this project, how it was submitted. The rest of the project is vested, because the other two lots have been substantially completed. So essentially, what they're asking to do is shrink the building and reduce the grading at this point. There are a number of previous zoning hearing board things that, conditions that are satisfied on the current plan. Ted and I have reviewed that and feel like they satisfy all their previous obligations.
Zach, there are steep slopes back there, correct? But just to confirm, so everyone's aware that this application was submitted and approved prior to the new steep slope ordinance, correct?
Correct. This application came before the township, prior to the 2007 amendments that included, comprehensive zoning amendments, that I believe included the steep slopes ordinance that our original wanted, that we've since modified. So they're essentially grandfathered from those requirements. But yes, there would be some steep slopes disturbed on the property, but there would be less grading as a result of this plan over the previous.
Do any of the changes they're talking about, are any of them impacted at all by current ordinance at all? Due to any, some technical aspect?
We've certainly had some ordinance amendments since 2007, since this originally came through. Again, as a result of their, the plan being vested and being grandfathered from, basically from any ordinance changes, none of them would apply. In my mind, probably things that would apply would be stormwater management has changed, but we reviewed their plan and we feel comfortable with it. We now require sidewalks. There are things that would probably change in this plan if it was being developed today, but again, nothing, I wouldn't say anything substantial.
Donna, any public comments? Peter, any questions?
None.
Rich?
No, I'm good, thanks.
Anyone else? Okay. Rich, do you want to make a motion?
Sure. Make a motion to approve modification to the land development plan for 73 Ton Road. It's a smaller building, footprint looks like a decrease of 10,000 square feet from 52,000 square feet to 42,000 square feet.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes. Thank you, Zach. Next, we can have a property maintenance code update from Ted Locker. And if you can talk loud into that mic, Ted, that'd be great.
Certainly. Good evening. So as far as property maintenance, the board, I believe, has been given a specific list of properties and the specific issues with those properties. Just quickly, there's properties on King Road, Village Way, Birch Road, Buttonwood Avenue, Rick Mar Lane, Carolane, Lancaster Avenue, Buck Run Lane, and Sweetsford Road, with a variety of issues that have been, that are currently being worked on or that have been, I guess, cleaned up or taken care of. There are citations out on a few of them, and continue to work on all of them to get them all to the goal line, basically. Really, the items as far as property maintenance goes. The zoning hearing board, we have one application for February. It is for a property at 15 Accord, which is in one of the new Toll Brothers communities. This is for the addition of a sunroom on a new deck, and they are exceeding the building coverage by about 84 square feet. So they're looking for a variance for that.
No problem. Zoning hearing board issue.
Just out of curiosity, Ted, just because of the way building structures are so close up there, certainly the neighbor on each side of that property, have they been notified?
They have been notified already. The neighbor, well, HOA owns the land behind them, they've been notified, and across the street pursuant to our notification requirements and the zoning ordinance.
Okay, so we're positive that was done?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Peter, would you like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to not send the solicitor.
Know that there's necessarily a need for a motion.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
There's a question. Oh, there's a question.
Barbara Ann Thab has a question.
Hi, again, Barbara Ann Thab, Broadleaf Trail. Thank you for reminding people, Scott, about speaking into the microphone. It's appreciated. I just wondered if there's anything that should be happening regarding the very, very large tree truck that's been parked on the side of the importer on 30. Also, there is, there's house renovation going on on 66 Sprawl Road that is causing sort of washout with mud and rocks and stuff going into Sprawl Road, 352. And unlike the house next to them that had been under construction, the apartment building, they don't seem to have that protective barrier. And I was wondering if that could be improved, because as you know, the runoff down that road is excessive, and then you end up with a lot of rocks up and down there. And then also, I've been noticing at the cigar place that's on the corner of Route 30 and 352, when they're closed and late at night and even overnight, that there's several cars parked there. And I'm just wondering if we're aware of that and if stuff like that's allowed. I don't think that there's residences in that building, and I just thought that's been odd, especially after the snowstorm recently. There was a car or two that looked like they hadn't been dug out of the snow, and I just wanted to mention that, so that could be looked into. Thank you.
Ted, I wanted to ask, did you pick up the address that Barbara Ann had indicated?
On Sprawl Road?
Yeah.
I will work with codes on that when they would have been issuing the permits on the construction, so I can check with them.
All right, I just didn't pick up the number, that's why.
66.
Okay. 66. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
That, I guess, was our public comment. Anyone else have any comments?
No more.
Okay.
Barbara Ann.
I'm sorry, Donna, Barbara Ann has another question? Okay, go ahead.
It's not a question. It was just I wanted to share with everybody, residents and the board, just to let them know about a really wonderful event, virtual event that's happening that is part of the Chester County Library System that can benefit the Malvern Public Library, which is East Whiteland Township's hometown library. And it's an author event with Eric Larson, and it's a virtual tea event where you'll have a chance to listen to the author talk about his new book, have tea, get a signed copy of his book, et cetera. And it's a great way to participate in the community and also do something lovely for the Malvern Public Library. So if you're interested in that, you could just go to malvern-library.org, and on the homepage, there's a way that you can sign up for this event. There's a small fee for it, but it is a fundraising event, and if you select the Malvern Public Library, the proceeds will go directly to the library. So I just wanted to let everybody know that and say thank you for participating. I think it's going to be a great event and well-attended. Thank you.
Is the consent agenda? And what I will do is I'll read the consent agenda in its entirety, and if there's any questions at all, please stop me and ask the question. 10A, approve the meeting minutes from January 12th, 2022. Donna, I just sent you a text. Do we have the right name of that individual?
Oh, that you asked me about earlier?
Yes.
Did you have the right last name?
I have the right last name, it's just that the first name, I just wanted to make sure.
Oh, I'm confused.
Okay, all right. Okay. Not a major issue, so I'm not going to worry about it. 10B, ratify the payment of the bills for January in the dollar amount of $466,426. And to accept USHA's Treasury report as of December 31st, 2020. 10D, proposal from Arrow to prepare and submit an annual MS4 report through June 30th, 2022, not to exceed $35,000. 10E, to ratify the 2022 summer camp fees and scholarships. 10F, authorized to release request for qualifications for the Sidley Road Mill Lane Chester Valley Trail in the amount of $250,000 grant received from DCD. Any questions? Yes, Donna?
Please go on. You actually said the Treasury report as 2020, 2022.
That's what I'm reading.
It should be 2021, isn't it?
Should be, USHA?
Yeah. It should be. 2021. Not even that late.
So I'll reread 10C to be amended to accept the Treasury report as of December 31st, And note that typo, Donna, operations manager. Martin, you have a question? Again, if you can talk into the mic, that'd be great.
Martin Lutz, Lab Road. Straightforward question on the 10F. Maybe you can explain that a little further. What's the purpose of the grant? Is that construction? Is it design?
Sure. Steve, can you?
It's design. It's survey, design, engineering permitting. Yeah. Mm-hmm.
Okay, good question, Martin. And Rich, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve the consent agenda as read and reread.
Do I have a second?
I will second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Good night.